Six o'clock, about to call the September twelfth Madison City Council, session two order please. And with that, we have Robin Scott from Asbury Church here to lead us in the prayer.
May we pray. Father, we just want to thank you for the many blessings you give us in this life. And one of those blessings is to belong to a community, to live together and to work together. And God, I thank you for the folks that are before us today that have chosen to serve. And God, we pray for discernment for them, for wisdom for them, as they make decisions that affect all of our lives. Lord, again, thank you for blessing our community the way you have, for giving us the churches in our community, the services that we have, the great police officers and firefighters and paramedics and all that serve people, Lord, that are there to help and to be your hands and feet. So, Lord, bless this meeting tonight. May every decision be that which you would have us to make, and may we live lives, Lord, that bring honor and glory to you and that benefit each other. And we pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Robin. Please follow me in the pledge. Before we get the roll call, I just want to say that the prayer and the pledge is my two most favorite parts of this meeting. Today's been so hectic and running, and to be able to have somebody come every other week and pray for us as councilman, as a city, and I say the pledge, man, it just makes my day.
Amen.
With that, can we get the roll call?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Council President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Looks like we have a quorum, so we'll move forward. I know we have one amendment to the agenda tonight. Brian, could you step out?
Yeah, he did. We're asking, and you can put it under his line item if you would, and it would be for approval of Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash two forty-seven dash R two twenty-eight, and it's a purchase of green space. And we'll explain more as we get to that.
All right.
So, it would go under, I guess, E D.
Yeah, under Legal D.
Yep, Legal D.
Are there any other amendments? If not, we'll move forward with that. And with that, I'll ask for the approval of amendments for August twenty-second. Move to approve. Second. Motion, and who was the second?
Connie.
Connie, Connie was the second. Is there any discussion? Not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye, motion passes. Next is presentation and awards, and we've got a presentation of service award by police tonight.
Hey, we all. I'm here for a presentation of a twenty-year pen for Sergeant Steve Reeves, who recently moved over to the investigative division. Steve has started out his career of service with, as an MP in the United States Army, began a civilian career in Huntsville, in the Huntsville Police Department, but he saw the light and came to Madison. Been here for twenty years, started out as a patrol officer, worked criminal investigations, narcotics investigations, was a supervisor both as a corporal and as a sergeant on the street, and now he's supervising the detectives in the investigative division. So, Steve, just wanted to thank you for twenty years of great service.
Good. Next is Madison Street Festival.
Let's see if I can get this. I'm not a big speaker, so thank you all for having us. Good evening, Mayor Finley and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight and update you all about the Madison Street Festival. We are nineteen days away from our fortieth festival, and we are just tickle pink and excited. My name is Crystal McBriar. I'm the president of the planning committee, and this is Tommy Overcash, as many people know. He is my right-hand man and the logistic director for our planning committee. In two thousand and nineteen, Madison Street Festival had its best year. If you were there, you saw the thirty-seven thousand people come to our very, very small downtown Madison. Little did we know, five months later, what would happen in March of two thousand and twenty. The pandemic hit, and we canceled the festival very early that year, but we didn't miss a beat, and we started to try and plan for two thousand and twenty-one. We moved into the two thousand and twenty-one Planning Committee with a goal of making it our comeback year. Unfortunately, ten months after we planned, and participation was a little bit low, and some of our vendor areas, registration, we had to kind of bring it out a little farther to bring people in, and unfortunately, in August, we had to cancel due to the Delta variant and some other factors. But our all-volunteer committee continued to plan our comeback year for two thousand and twenty-two. From the beginning of this planning year, the buzz started, the excitement started, people got excited, and we were able to go over budget this year with our sponsorship acquired. Four of our six registration areas closed early due to filling max capacity, and our invitation-only areas are slapful. This year, we moved our children's area to a bigger field off of Maple Street into our interact zone, got it out of the big tent, broke it down to smaller tents so the kiddos can kind of get around and move, and all of the participants in that area are ready to do some fun stuff with them, so that's a very happening area. We also created a brand-new area called Midtown Madison, which is going to house all of you in the city departments from Madison, so we're extremely excited about bringing that to the festival. This year, we have had our fair share of what we like to call hiccups. COVID has changed many things in our world, but our committee of forty strong people have pushed through, worked hard, and we are ready to bring this festival back October first. Many people do not realize that our committee plans almost twelve months out of the year and that we are all volunteer. This year, they have been passionate about building momentum after not being able to have a festival for a couple of years. Due to the parking issues that we have in downtown Madison, again, this year, we will have two shuttles that run from Madison City Stadium and from Crosspoint Church. So, we're hoping that those shuttles will bring the people in, and with the help of the City of Madison, we'll have Mars buses there that will bring the handicap in also. Early this year, we claimed our festival theme, which I think is really cool after hearing what the Mayor Finley's address is going to be. Come back here and celebrate, celebrating being back together, celebrating our community, our small businesses in our beautiful downtown Madison, celebrate making it through a pandemic, celebrating Madison Street Festival's legacy of forty festivals. The Madison Street Festival was created many years ago to bring community together. In the nineties, the Madison Street Festival moved to a five oh one C four nonprofit with the goal of supporting education programs in our area. Our mission is to provide a day of free family entertainment that unites our community as they enjoy arts and culture, interactive exhibits and entertainment. We accomplish this through sponsorship and vendor fees along with donations. When we take our profits after that festival, it's essentially one big, large fundraiser. We take all those profits and we give back through our grant program. Since two thousand and twelve, the Madison Street Festival has been able to give back over sixty thousand dollars to the community in educational grants. Currently, our grant application is live and will run until October thirty-first on our website, madisonstreetfestival.org, and we are excited to be able to give back yet again in twenty-two. One of the biggest celebrations we have had besides being able to get back together is that the Madison Street Festival is now one of Madison's newest five oh one C three organizations. I get a little emotional about that because we set a goal for that this year and worked very hard to accomplish this status. We look forward to continue our legacy by planning the festival the first Saturday in October and giving back to educational programs through our grant program. I want to take this opportunity to thank the City of Madison for your support this year and in years past. So, many departments within this city have been so helpful and so supportive for us. We look forward to showcasing you, all of you, in our brand-new area, Midtown Madison this year, and I just want to thank you for your time and let me update you all. Do you have any questions for me? No?
Parade starts what time?
Parade starts at nine AM.
Okay.
Starts at Insanity, goes down Mill, travels down Church, makes a right onto Front, goes on Sullivan, and then disembarks at the church and the school.
Okay, and then it runs through four o'clock?
Yes, nine AM to fourth AM.
All right.
So, hope to see all of you all there, and please tell all of your people about it because unfortunately, not unfortunately, we do have a lot of new people in this area, and I still talk to people every day that have never heard of the Madison Street Festival. We would appreciate if y'all would hear about it. Do you have anything, Tommy? Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, y'all.
Thank you for your work.
Public work, I mean, public comments? Anyone like to address mayor and council tonight?
You can depend on some things, just like you can the council meeting twice a month. My name is Angela Gary. I haven't moved in over two decades. On September second, our city's beloved Mayor Burwell Sonny Willbanks entered his eternal home. He was honored by his family on Wednesday, September seventh, at twelve PM to receive friends, past coworkers, and extended family. His funeral started at one PM. I'm here tonight, and I'd like to ask Paul Finley if he attended the funeral or the visitation to pay your respects back to the family, and if not, he was sent as a city representative. Did the city send a floral arrangement? If you did not go or send someone, it's just so disrespectful and disgraceful. I'm sure you've heard more about Queen Elizabeth's death than the man that served this city tirelessly for more years than any other mayor. You wouldn't have the city hall to work in every day if not for him. Our school system would not exist because he worked tirelessly to make sure that our beloved Bob Jones High School was built on the south side of Highway seventy-two so it would be in the City of Madison. He was brilliant. He had a vision to see a second fire station on the north side of town. Since his retirement, there has been a fire station built on Hughes Road, which is on the north side of town, and then a third station on County Line Road. I have begged Paul Finley since Mayor Willbanks had a major stroke in February, and I started at the end of March begging Mr. Finley to, let's do something to honor Mayor Willbanks. I've had at least ten interactions with him, meetings in his office. I am probably the one in the few citizens that takes advantage of meeting the open-door policy in the mayor's office. I take advantage of that, or I have in the past. I've had ten, at least ten interactions, a meeting, and email to see that Mayor Willbanks, please be honored. Before he died, it was obvious he was going to. Ninety-two-year-old stroke victims don't get better. Ms. Bibi Ochin also pleaded for something to be done in his honor. I will not speak for her as she gets her thoughts across effortless, effortlessly. Paul Finley at one time told me it would have to be discussed at the next work session. The last work session was held in March. Ironically, the next work session was held on Wednesday, September seventh, for an emergency meeting the very same day as Madison's beloved Mayor Burwell Sonny Willbanks was laid to rest. How pathetic is that? I was told on August first, my last open-door meeting with Mr. Finley, several things, and they weren't kind because he is tired of my search for my mother that has been gone for fifteen months today, by the way. No one at this city hall cares, although she was a dedicated city employee too, just like Mayor Willbanks. I made the statement with tears in my eyes. You have no plans to do anything for him, do you? And I quote Mayor Finley, and I plead excuse the language. He said, "Not a damn thing." I was heartbroken, mortified.
Miss Gary.
Mortified and infuriated that Paul Finley let those colors be seen by a citizen. I was not surprised after all the convoluted dealings with trying to get my brother arrested for using my dead father's credit card and what appears to be the financial exploitation of my eighty-five-year-old mother with dementia by a city employee that is still employed and being protected. Counsel, I'm begging you to make right what is so wrong and discuss how you, as a council, can honor Mayor's finest, Madison's finest, one of his finest, my finest mayor's. I was promised it would be just discussed at the next work session, which is the night after, day after tomorrow, September the fourteenth. Discuss it and vote on the honor. Do not belittle and forget a man that was a huge figure in the history of Madison. Do your job and do what's right. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to address council and mayor?
Me again. I wanted to thank mayor and council again for today, having that meeting with both the mayors. That was very informative. I had a question about the school board appointment that's tonight and some concerns, and maybe you can address that when you make that appointment, but I know there, I know some citizens are wondering, I just didn't know how that process worked when we had a school board member step down, and I know it was really close to when we had already interviewed some people, and so I know some of us weren't sure if you were just going to pick from that pool of people or open it back up, and I know a couple of council members had asked for a work session so that could be discussed, and that wasn't discussed in public, so I'm not really sure what the process is, and I wondered if there is a policy on the books about what happens, you know, if you do have someone step down within some amount of time, so I just wanted some clarification on that.
Yes, ma'am. I'll talk to that. Anyone else? Now, we'll close public comments, move into the consent agenda.
Okay, the finance committee is going to meet next week on Tuesday, September twentieth, at ten AM. The finance committee has also reviewed the consent agenda items and bills to be paid and find everything to be in order. We want to note the acceptance of a donation in the amount of a hundred dollars from Valley Internal Medicine and Pediatrics, PC of Decatur, to be deposited in the senior center donation account. With that, I would like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye, motion passes. Next, presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and I'm going to start, if I can, with the update on our budget. As everybody knows, we start in the mayor's office, working with our department heads, probably end of July, beginning of July, we work about two months working with them. They do a great job of talking with their folks, trying to figure out, and again, focused on our mission statement, which in paraphrasing is to work on improving quality of life by taking the money that you, as citizens, trust us with and stretching that as far as we can to make us, make the biggest possible impact we can in your daily lives, and I think we do a great job of that. They then roll that up to us. We take a little bit of time, meet with department heads, and in turn, I guess, the last week, presented that to the finance committee, who then will eventually present that to the full council. So, just to give everybody just kind of a quick idea, you know, I started last year with this slide, and I wanted to keep this slide in here because still, again, you know, Money Magazine named Madison the twelfth-best city to live in in the nation. It's the number-one zip code. Right now, we're sitting in number-one zip code in the state of Alabama, something we're really proud of. You know, it goes back to you don't look for trophies in this job. You look to keep doing your job, but when you obtain things like that, it really makes you happy that you're working with a team of people and that people love living here, and I know that they do. With that said, they ask us to continue to work hard for them and to take the revenues that they give us and stretch it as far as we can. Guys, it starts with our employees, and that's where we started our budget this year. So, for the sixth straight year, our employees will receive a step increase. I say that, our budget has in it, and council will make the final approval of it. Let me just say that, that we will recommend to council, and we did to the finance committee, for the sixth straight year, a step increase. We also, for the sixth straight year, will look to not increase the premium payments to our employees. That's at least about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year that the city basically subsidizes to make sure that our employees are well taken care of. We also will ask for a three percent COLA as, from an inflationary standpoint, we've seen what's happened, and we want to help in any way we can to make a difference. You know, it starts with our employees. We continue to do an incredible job of doing more with less, and we have added employees as we've grown, but we do it in a way that's smart. This year, we're looking to add fourteen employees. Four of those would be in police, six would be in recreation, and that's Recreation and or Senior Center, two of which would be for grass cutting. And one of the areas that we have found this year is in our neighborhood parks because that's contracted out, and they're struggling with workforce. We've fallen behind on that. So, again, Corey Alfred and his team, basically, hey, we have the mowers. If you can get us two additional people that can not only help us in neighborhood parks, but we could kind of rotate through, they would look to add two people that they could help with that. We also, in those fourteen of number, would look to add a facility manager. Dustin Riddle and his team do a great job out of the building department, but with the additional facilities that we have coming onboard, we need someone who can full-time look at managing those facilities. It gives Dustin the ability to work with his team on code enforcement and inspections and the different things that go on there. Engineering has asked for, and we without question agree, we need a CIP project manager. The best one we have by far is Mary Beth. Any project that she has, whether it's library or the forty-six-million-dollar multi-use venue, come in under budget. But as we've grown and as these projects come up, from road projects especially, we need someone that can be there each and every day looking to manage those projects. We're looking to add a person in communications, and that would be out of the mayor's office. Samantha does a very, very good job, but as we've continued to grow as a city, we want to make sure that we continue to add value to our community by continuing to communicate in the best possible way that we can. And then one other that's a critical position, but it's not one of those numbers there, but it's going to be added, is a bid and a purchase manager, and we handle that in-house. Roger Bellamy and his team in finance will look to initially take that on. It was run out of our legal department. The legal, we'll move that over to finance. Finance will manage that. You know, that's a critical component, one, to bid it appropriately from a legal side, but before you even get to the bid, you have to have a scope of work that covers all the different pieces that could possibly be needed, and we're going to look to, I won't say revamp it, we're going to look to make it the best that it can possibly be by adding someone that's complete focus on that. We also have a huge community investment. There's about two, two-point-two-five million dollars for capital purchases. That's a fire truck, that's your police cars, public works equipment, recreational equipment. It's IT requirements that are needed to keep us cyber-safe and the things that they need, so a big investment there. Six hundred-plus dollars to support our schools for SROs and crossing guards. You know, every school this year is covered. You know, one of the things that the community invested in that we're still extremely proud of is the millage increase that was for schools, but a portion of that was also for safety. So, they were able to add some force, some sides, some things from their side where we're able to add it from our side, and we continue to, I say subsidize that to make sure it's safe. About six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars subsidy to our Madison Library, a big investment in our community. We know how much we value education. We want to make sure that they continue to have what they need. About eight-point-two-million dollars set aside for land and/or facilities. That may change a little bit. We've got a walk-on tonight that, you know, I don't ever want to surprise council, but one of the things that's happened more quickly, and we'll just explain why, is we may need to look to do something there that in turn helps the community with some of the things that are needed, but one of the other ones would be public safety. We know we eventually need another fire station, possibly a police substation. We're looking to make a big difference when it comes to public safety. And then there's outside appropriations, outside agencies of over five-hundred-thousand dollars in this budget, about a fifty percent increase to our Madison Chamber of Commerce, a thirty-three percent increase to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Let me give you an example of where that makes a big difference. This year, you'll hear that at Trash Panda Stadium, or excuse me, Toyota Stadium, on October fifteenth, they're going to play a Division One football game, Jacksonville State will play UNA. That was brought to us by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and so because of that, we're looking, you know, there's a, probably a six-figure possibility of profit that we split with Ball Corp. That makes a big difference for our community. We want to continue to invest in that. Madison Visionary Partners has shown their value in a big way by obtaining well over, or close to half a million dollars for Kids Kingdom through community donations, so we want to continue as we look to eventually figure out the funding for our community center for a lot of different projects. They will help us obtain that. It's a five oh one C three that focuses on areas of importance to the city where folks can in turn generate, give money that's tax-deductible, but also helps our city. Fifty percent increase in the enrichment center. That's counseling that's needed at the schools. You know, we continue to see that, and then a fifty percent increase in the partnership for drug-free community. So, again, an investment in our community organizations that focus on things with a more laser-beam focus than we do from a generic side. A lot of different projects are in there, you know, two of the top ones, or two, three of the first two, neighborhood repaving. You know, one of the struggles we have right now is spending our money. You know, getting the folks in here to pave is difficult. There's a lot of different opportunity out there, so again, we have two thousand and one, two thousand and two projects, and then we're adding two thousand and three. We have a little over a million dollars a year set aside each year for neighborhood repaving. We want to try to do everything we can to get caught up and then spend that money to make a difference in our neighborhoods. A complete redo of Madison Boulevard from County Line to Zert. That's going to be a big community impact, not only to move traffic, but to make it more accessible and help with economic development. Waltrana Restriping is a carryover from last year. There's only one Restriping company in North Alabama, and we in turn, trying to get them here is difficult, so that will make a difference in safety. Hughes Road, Halsey Turn Lanes, Sullivan Street and Madison Boulevard intersection are both to support the mid, excuse me, Journey Middle School, so we'll look to do that. Waltrana and Gooch Intersection and Sidewalk, so that's an area, you know, as we look to continue to connect our city, those are areas and neighborhoods that can't necessarily get to the greenways. This would be an area where we can help accomplish that, get them over to the sidewalk that's already on the eastern side of Waltrana and eventually to the Hughes Sidewalk and different places there. I won't go through the rest of them. There's a lot of different things. This will be on our website starting tomorrow, so folks can get to that. Additional other projects. The top one there, multiple traffic signal upgrades. So, one of the best ways, if you either add lanes or you make a big impact in your intersections, and so in the ability to add technology to our signal boxes where we can manage that and make adjustments on the fly, we have to add the hardware that's needed in a lot of those boxes, and there's money in for that. We'll complete Garner Street, start the projects of design for the three-laning of Brown's Ferry out on the west side. Seager's in, I guess they say Michelle. and, I guess they say Michelle, Michelle, um, the Kaiser Greenway connection. So basically the developer is responsible for getting the Bradford Creek Greenway under the railroad tracks and then down to the end of his property. This would take it from the end of his property on Kaiser all the way down to Sullivan Street, eventually connecting the Bradford Creek Greenway with historic downtown Madison. Sidewalk at Lion Quarry, Palmer Park Phase Two design. So where we've completed the new fields at Phase One, we would look to design the next phase at Palmer Park in Field Two. A lot of neighborhood park improvements. We know the value that that has, changing out equipment, adding equipment. And then one of the things I have on here is the Palmer Park Field Turf Planning. You know, Cory, I basically asked him, do we keep that in there? He said absolutely. Every year that we do that, those are the best fields, um, that we've ever had, and they're in the best condition they've ever been in. And again, part of what they do is focus on that. So over $10 million worth of projects that are in those areas. Um, way too small to see here. It'll be on the website, but that's the operating budget and where our money comes from, whether it's sales tax, property tax, uh, operating budget. So these are the expenditures, um, that are public safety, parks and rec, um, you know, general services, human resources, which is where a lot of our insurance and the different pieces fit, um, for, for our employees. Uh, and then where the money is, is spent and, and what percentages that it has, again, pretty far for a lot of you guys to see, but this will be on the website tomorrow. Um, almost 50% of the money that we have in the city goes directly to personnel costs. I don't want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, the Trash Pandas. You know, the neat thing for us, and, and you heard Tommy Overcash talk about it, they have played all 63 games that they had scheduled, and this week, unless something dramatically changes, they'll get in their final six. So this is the last week that the Trash Pandas are in town before the playoffs, which start the following week, and they've made, and will add at least one game. Um, and then lastly, all payments from the Trash Pandas and Ball Corpse are up to date as of today, and they have not missed a payment. They've kept them going, and we feel really good about what this year numbers, this year's numbers are going to be. Home Place Park is finished. I wanted to leave that in there because I wanted to remind folks of what, again, was funded last year, and we're continuing and working hard. Part of the reason that, again, funding our chamber at a little higher, uh, uh, number, not only works for our small businesses, but it works for events that make a difference in our city. We're, uh, we can enjoy that. Football games right now, bands can play there. It's just a neat thing to have. You know, with the building formerly known as Three Springs, um, again, part of what last year's budget has was, was a little bit of money in there to make sure that we could, uh, work on the architectural design. Um, uh, we're getting close to that, where we would have the scope of work ready to bring a final design to both council and the community to see, at which point we would then bid that. Once we bid it, we'll know how much it's actually going to cost, and then we would figure out the funding structure that's needed, um, you know, from that. Not funded yet because it just don't have an understanding of how much will be needed. But again, something that's 30 acres, 30,000 square feet, and again, something where we can enlarge. No longer is Madison a city for a senior center to just eat, play bingo, and go home. Very, very active community that we're going to transition that into something that's so pop- uh, po- popular for our, our city. And then the Kids' Kingdom renovation, started about a week and a half ago. Uh, that's a, about a million dollar project, of which about half of that was raised through donations, through Madison Visionary Partners. A very inclusive, um, you know, uh, renovation that, that takes what we have. The Jane Dow and her team did a phenomenal job in, in the late nineties of putting it in place, but it was built in the late nineties. Little old, um, we want to make sure that it's bigger, better, stronger, and that's what we're going to be doing with that. So, uh, again, in, in where we started, a, a community that continues to, we work hard as, as a team, and it's the, the mayor, the council, um, the department heads, and the employees that work together to try, to try to make this happen. So I'll be quiet for a minute. Any, any things that you guys have? I know the finance committee currently has this. Uh, we'll make a couple of adjustments and eventually get it to the full council, and I think you're looking to vote on this at the next council meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we've got a finance committee meeting next week, so that if any council members, uh, don't have their questions answered before then, you can come there. Certainly send emails to the mayor or to finance, uh, to get your questions answered. And then for the members of the public, um, in turn, uh, tomorrow morning, you'll get to see spreadsheets. Uh, we're going to load that on the finance webpage so you can see what the proposed budget looks like. I know there are a number of other organizations that are, have requested an allocation, and so they'll be able to see, uh, what the mayor's office is proposing there. And, uh, I really want to thank Roger Bellamy for all of your work and the department heads to get this information to the mayor's office a few weeks early, so that we could present this to you before we actually vote on it in a couple of weeks.
And when is that finance committee meeting for, uh, residents to know about? Is it next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m.?
Yes, next Tuesday, the twentieth.
Twentieth at 10:00 a.m. Okay.
And we may move it in here based on what kind of questions I'm receiving. Uh, this might be a better venue to try to host something like that.
You're good. All right. Great. Couple more things. I want to first thank our IT department. Uh, we made a, a quick change, uh, at the end of last week because we wanted to, uh, when it came to the meeting that launched today, the governance transition meeting, uh, we wanted to do everything we could to be, um, transparent, to be able to, uh, uh, document it, put it on the website, so everybody could see it if they couldn't be here. We also wanted to make sure that the Zoom part of it for, for Mayor Andrews was ready. They adjusted on the fly, and then everything is working tonight. Um, so again, they did a great job, and we really appreciate what they did. I want to echo, uh, what, uh, Tommy Overcash said on our police, our fire, our public works, our recreation when it comes to the city activities that go on. Our parade, which I think is one of the neatest things that happens in the city of Madison, is our high school has their homecoming parade up the Main Avenue and Hughes Road for Bob Jones, and down County Line for James Clemmons, which will be this coming Thursday. They do a great job of working diligently as a team to make it safe. That is something that we're, you know, as a, as a, as a town, it's a small-town feel with a big town, to find the balance of both of those. I can tell you, as a community, I also want to thank our community. I had zero emails, zero phone calls from our community, and I guarantee you, there were some people that weren't ready for Hughes Road to be shut down in that timeframe. And yet, they, they value what we do from a community standpoint to make that special, and I really want to thank our community for that. Again, a reminder of the Trash Pandas, the last games of the season will be starting tomorrow night at 6:35, all the way through Sunday, which I think is a 2:35 game. I want to thank the Ball Corpse team for all that they've done. They are a great organization to work with, and they've been great partners. And I do want to remind the community, celebrate Madison. We used to, um, call it Connect. It was done at the Space and Rocket Center. This year, it's going to be done at Madison, at, at Toyota Field. It'll be Friday, November 4th. We're getting that out to the commu- it's a community event. So you'll be able to come as a community, enjoy activities. I think it's going to end with fireworks. We are able to give the state of the city address. I'll, we'll work hard to not make it boring and make it fairly short, but we want to share all that's going on with our community. And then I'll end, um, all I'll simply say is this, you can hear a personal attack, and, and I'm a big boy, and, and I can tell you that I can take all of those that come at us. Um, a quote, which is just absolutely not true, but what we were able to do as a city is, um, show our respect for our former mayor by lowering our flags to half-staff on that Wednesday. Um, uh, Mayor Will Banks was, you know, one of the mayors that, uh, made a difference in our community. Uh, he was here when the form of government changed, and where we're all sitting here now was when he, along with Ms. Otchen, um, were, were part of the team that helped make that happen. And we're very proud to have, uh, been able as a mayor to make that decision with council support. Um, and, uh, and again, our, our, our thoughts go out to the family. With that said, that's all I have.
Very good. Edition number one.
Uh, yes, sir. I just have a couple of items. Um, one that was addressed, I did get a couple of emails, about three emails with regard to mowing, and did want to reiterate what was said, that to please be patient with right-of-way and parks in particular, getting to them as fast as we can. Hopefully with coming into great weather, we'll be able to, uh, to get caught up in that area. And I want to give a thanks out to HR that, um, they provide a service for us every year with the wellness screening, and that is such a benefit to all of our employees, not just financially, because it lowers our insurance costs, but it gives our employees an opportunity to meet one-on-one with a nurse to talk about their health issues. And it's just, I know it's a big chunk out of two days. It's a lot of time and organization, and we've, I don't think we've ever mentioned it, so I just want to thank you. Um, as mayor said, our employees are our greatest resource, and I really appreciate that you provide this service to all of our employees. Um, I attended the government transition meeting today and want to thank Greg and mayor and Mayor Andrews, uh, for leading that. I thought it was a thoughtful discussion. I counted at one time about 58 people, which was a great turnout and, and very engaged community. So thank you to everyone for coming, and thank you for putting it on for us. And the best part of my week happened yesterday when I talked with nine eight-year-old Boy Scouts and spent about 45 minutes with them and just had a great time. I've invited them to come and lead our pledge of allegiance and just, uh, they said that they would be watching on TV tonight, and so just want to encourage them to come and, and lead the pledge and, and meet, reach out to any of the council members that are in your district if you ever want us to come to talk to your HOA or Boy Scouts or anything. I think we were all happy to do that, and that's all I have.
Very good. Edition number two.
I'll try my best to talk loud enough so you can hear me. Um, yesterday, I met with the Girl Scouts. Well, after tomorrow, I was meeting with the Boy Scouts, and, um, so we talked about some community projects they might be able to do for their Silver Awards. Also, um, I wanted to mention that Mike Oliver was also at the government transition, governance transition meeting earlier and did a great job, and I appreciate the time and energy y'all put into that meeting and to listen into all the questions and taking time to answer all of those patiently. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Edition number three.
Uh, first order of business I have is, um, I need to do an appointment for, to the construction, uh, Board of Appeals, place number three, and that's William, um, I can't, I can't bear to.
Stan, Stan.
Stanville, thank you. Um, so I, I don't know if I need a, that's, that's my motion.
Second.
Is there any other, is there any other appointments? If not, we'll just, we'll appoint him through, um, ac- through acclamation.
Yeah, okay.
Um, second thing I'd like to do is thank, uh, Mayor Friendly for offering me his, uh, reading glasses. Um, I'm doing just fine without them. I just can't read names. Um, but, uh, in all, all seriousness, uh, I would like to thank finance, uh, for all their work. You know, we, they, they get praised once a year for, for budgets and, and that kind of thing, but there's so many things that go on throughout the year, big projects. Um, you, you've, you've seen a lot of those that, that we, we see, and then there's some, you know, that, that we work on and eventually bring, bring to public. So I'd like to thank, thank that entire group. Um, I'm excited about having the parade downtown. It's been a few years. Um, I'm, I'm grateful for that. Um, I look forward to, to having, uh, the, uh, uh, our events in October and, and having all that back down. We spend a lot of money down there, so I look forward to seeing that. Um, I'd like to thank Public Works, you know, with all the, the, the rain we've had and those kind of things and, and moving, uh, just getting all the, the ditches clean, the trash, and just trying to keep up with that. I like to thank those guys, and, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Very good. Got a couple of things tonight also, so we'll start with the, um, replacement of Greg Halsey for the, uh, for the Board of Education. So thi- this was a pretty tough one. Um, we went, I went and sat down and talked to, uh, superintendent and, uh, and the school board and talked through them, kind of, some of their needs as Greg left. And they've got kind of a young board on there, not knowing what, what'll happen with the next people coming on. They said, hey, we, we really need some experience on, on the board now to kind of fill this gap for the next cou- couple of years. So called several, um, ex, uh, Bo- Board of Education members, and they're either on council or they can't, um, they moved outside the city limits, or they're on planning commission, or they, uh, have a conflict of interest or conflict of time. So also, all those resources, uh, I did talk to all of the people that had, um, applied, and we interviewed earlier. They all were willing, um, if we decided to go that route. Um, and talking to, uh, the superintendent and some more, they really needed somebody with some experience. So, um, reached out to, uh, To- Tommy Overcash. Um, he was on the city council for right at 16 years. He was a liaison to, uh, to, to the school board. I think he interviewed everybody on there now. Um, and I, I feel like he'd be a great, a great asset on that board. Um, I talked to, uh, numerous people here in- individually on that. Um, and that's kind of how that, uh, we've, we've talked through that. So with that, I'd like to appoint To- Tommy Overcash to the, um, to the Board of Education for the, for the interim term.
Second.
Is there any other appointments? If not, then we'll move forward with that commission with Tommy on, on the school board. Next, uh, there's a town, Town Madison Co- Co-op Board. It ex- that board expired on August 12th. So, uh, the three people that are, that were on it are Steve, are Steve Haraway, and he's nominated through, um, the county commission. So we and Steve, they will not nominate Steve for him to stay, stay on. Our other two is Kenny Watson and Ron Klein. So I'd like to nominate Ki- Kenny Watson for one seat. Is there anyone else that has another nomination? Not, we'll move Kenny forward in that seat through acclamation, and then Ron, Ron Klein's been on there, and, um, like, likely Ron on there. So like, not nominate Ron Klein again. Um, we'll move Ron with the acclamation also. Uh, that's all I have tonight. We'll go to edition number five.
I'd like to, uh, thank everyone involved with the 9/11, uh, remembrance yesterday. Uh, the mayor and Connie and Karen and I were able to attend. Um, it, it is so strange to be a part of living history, and it is so important to learn from history. And I'm glad that our city continues to remember that event and thank those who, um, served. Thank all of our first responders and remember those who lost their lives. It's important for us to continue to remember and help those, uh, who came after, uh, to remember the, that day, that tragic day. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Edition number six.
I'd like to echo what Renee said, the extra day, yesterday at the 9/11 remembrance. It was very poignant. It was wonderful to sit there and look at our current police and fire and rescue people and know that they are taking care of us and are protecting us. And they're following in the same footsteps of those that lost their lives serving 21 years ago. And to me, it was hard to believe it'd been 21 years. Um, in some ways, it, it was like yesterday. I still remember it so clearly, and yet we are a long way down the road. But I really did want to thank our fire, our police, all those that served so selflessly to protect us. Um, second, uh, one of the perks of office is getting to ride in the homecoming parade, uh, in the, uh, Fire Engine. It was a great parade for those that, for the Bob Jones, and I'm really looking forward to the one for James Clemmons this coming week. It is so fun to see the excitement of the community. I mean, we're just, it's not like a big fancy thing. It's not like the Rose Bowl parade, but the excitement on everyone's face and to just throw the candy to the children, and it was just such a community event. And I just love that about Madison, that we still have these small-town community events. So again, I'd like to thank the, um, the police for keeping it safe, um, and just provide a great day, and I am looking forward to Thursday, too. That'll be a lot of fun, too. Uh, second, I would also like to piggyback on what Crystal said about the Madison Street Festival. We really have been working hard for the last two and a half years in order to bring forward October 1st, and I am so excited. The only thing she didn't mention was volunteers. We are still looking for volunteers, so anybody that has time on that Saturday to come and work just for a couple hours, and there's going to be training for it, too. It's not like you just be walking up and not know what to do, but we're going to have advanced training. So anybody that can participate in that way, we would just love to have you join our team. But we do have, I've got 25, uh, food vendors coming this year, and we were, we were wondering if we could have that many. So it's just going to be a wonderful day. And, uh, and I just want to thank everybody on the committee. There are 40 people. They'll work really hard to put this together. And, um, it's just a wonderful, it's a wonderful event, and I'm really looking forward to that, too. So, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Edition number seven. No new business this week. There's no, um, other board of committee appointment. We got public hearing. We got four.
How are y'all?
Good.
Johnny, how you doing? Good. Uh, first, I have proposed ordinance, uh, number 2022 dash 217, rezoning certain property located, uh, owned by HomeX Realty LLC located at 130 Horace Drive, uh, west of Nats Road to R1A upon annexation, and we are requesting that this be continued to the September 26th meeting to allow for, um, additional public notification that's required.
Get a motion. Get a motion. Make that approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. I think more, more than a second.
Yes.
All right, John.
Hey.
Is there any discussion?
Johnny, remind me, I don't, I think when this came before planning commission, we didn't have any, any, any issue with this, right?
No, sir. It's just one lot with a, with one, one home on it.
Okay. All right, can, can, can we get the vote please?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Before we, before we do that, I want to make sure we didn't just vote to approve that. We voted to continue that. To continue it to.
The twenty-sixth.
Roger.
Our second item is, uh, proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash two fifteen. Rezoning certain property owned by M and Cliff and Charlotte Campbell located on both sides of Landers Road, south of Brownsbury Road from R two medium density residential district to B two community business district. And again, we're asking, uh, that this be continued to September twenty-sixth. Again, to allow all the, uh, public notification that's required to, to be done. Move to continue.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
So what about, oh, sorry. Never mind. Wrong person.
Cameron does liquor.
Yeah.
I'll make you do it all, Johnny.
Yeah.
Cameron's your beer, wine, and liquor.
So we, we have, uh, two alcohol public hearings tonight. The first being Ty Elephant Incorporated doing business the same. They've requested an on or off premise beer and wine license at eighty-seven sixty Madison Boulevard, uh, suites P and Q. Uh, this is a new request for alcoholic beverages at this location and everything's in order for this, uh, to be considered.
Okay, I'd like to open the, a public hearing. If anybody would like to address council and mayor. If not, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Where's this located again, Cameron?
It's in the Spencer Square, uh, shopping center.
Okay, good. I'd like to try it. Thank you.
In suite P and Q.
Thank you.
They mind their Ps and Qs.
Oh, why, yes.
All right, can, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And motion passes.
Uh, the second request we have is going to be down in, in the Town Madison area. We've got, uh, MDJ Saza LLC doing business as Saza Series Italian. Uh, they've requested a restaurant retail liquor license for the location of five oh one Town Madison Boulevard. And again, it's a new request and, uh, everything's in order for this to be considered.
I'd like to open the, um, the public hearing. Anyone like to address mayor and council? If not, can I, uh, get a motion please?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we know when they're going to open?
I'm afraid I don't have that one. I don't know.
Soon. They're waiting on equipment is their problem that they just can't get. So as soon as they can, they're ready to go.
Well, as soon as they can, I'm going.
I know you are.
And Renee's going with me. I heard October, but that might be a hope.
Can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Cameron.
Hey, Cameron. Um, IT.
I have two resolutions for you tonight. Uh, the first one is resolution twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-eight dash R. Asking for, um, us to be able to renew an agreement with Ring Central for our phone system. As you guys know, we switched over to a new way to do our phone system last year. It's been very successful. We'd like to renew that for another year. Uh, the amount listed here was the base amount. We will adjust that number some, but I have budgeted for the increase that will happen as we've added products and added employees throughout the year.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
We don't get to see you often, so glad, glad we get to see you. Thanks for coming out of closet and coming out here and tell, tell us about stuff.
Well, we can now through the phone system, we can have a video call if you want to, Teddy, anytime.
There you go. Awesome.
Can, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes.
Uh, the second resolution is twenty, uh, twenty-two dash two forty-six dash R. Um, this is a new security system we're bringing in. It's going to take three different products that we use now and combine them under one vendor, under one pane of glass. Um, I don't have the, uh, the software name here for security reasons, but, uh, I'd be glad to talk to you guys about it offline. Uh, we anticipate that being about fifty-four thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents a year, which is going to increase the price that I pay for those three products. But, uh, for the benefits that we're getting out of it, it's more than worth it. And I'd have budgeted for it in the upcoming year.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in a second. Is there any, any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes. Thank, thank you, Jason. Fannie.
Our first item tonight is proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash two thirteen. Ascending to the annexation of certain property owned by HomeX Realty LLC located at one thirty, uh, Forrest Drive. This is the one you just, uh, uh, approved to continue to August twenty-sixth. You can actually vote on the annexation tonight and annex it, or you can continue this one until the twenty-sixth as well. It'd just be in the city but not zoned until the twenty-sixth.
Can we do it all on the same night?
I, I.
Say not. Yeah, we continue.
Continue.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can, can, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And motion passes.
Our second item is, uh, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash two two eight. Ascending to the annexation of certain property owned by Point Place LLC located at one fifty-one Forrest Drive. And this is a first reading. Or a first reading.
We're busy on Forrest Drive, aren't we?
We are.
There you go.
There's nothing doing, first reading.
It's first reading, so yeah.
It's first reading.
You go ahead and go first reading.
You go on to the next one.
We don't have to do anything.
Let y'all know about it.
Yeah.
Uh, resolution number two thousand twenty-two, two two nine R. Setting a public hearing on proposed property, proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two, two thirty. On a, uh, certain property owned by Point Place LLC located at one fifty-one Forrest Drive to R one A upon annexation. And this is a first reading as well, or setting the public hearing.
Think you want to go ahead and vote on this?
Want to set the, you want to go ahead and set the public hearing?
Yeah, you got to vote on this to set it.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And, and motion passes.
Next, we have, uh, resolution number two thousand twenty-two, uh, two thirty-one R. Setting a public hearing on proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two, two thirty-two. Rezoning certain, uh, property owned by Don Burgreen, Joey Burgreen, and Sean L. Burgreen. Located on the south side of Huntsville Brownsbury Road, west of Morris Drive from AG Ag District to TND Traditional Town Neighborhood. And this is setting the public hearing.
Okay, Johnny, you said, read that resolution number again, please.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two, two three one dash R.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misheard that. Okay, you're good.
Make a motion to, uh, set public hearing.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have resolution number two thousand twenty-two, two three three dash R. Setting a public hearing on proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash two three four. To amend section four nine, M one restricted industrial district and section four ten, M two general industrial district of the zoning code to increase the maximum building height. And this is the setting of public hearing.
Make a motion to set public hearing.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And motion passes.
And last, we have proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash two twelve. Vacation of a utility drainage easement located at one four eight Reserve Way within Bridgefield subdivision. And, um, of our, uh, those who have to agree to this, the agencies and departments have signed off on it and we recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Johnny.
Engineering. Come on down.
Good evening. Um, so I've got resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two forty-four R. Acceptance of the Village of Oakland Springs Phase Two into the city's maintenance program.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Just to make sure that all, everything has been accomplished that we said that they would accomplish on the front end before we take it in.
Yes.
Perfect.
Any other discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Connie.
Thank you, second.
I do.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And, and motion passes.
All right. I also have resolution number twenty twenty-two, two forty-five R. Acceptance of Heritage Hills Phase Two into the city's maintenance program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes.
And. Go ahead, before you, before we make sure and again, to let everybody know, one of the things that happens when they bring this and they get it approved
is they sign up for certain requirements that are needed, uh, to have a, a, a solid neighborhood. And as we bring it into maintenance, we're now responsible for it. So the reason we always ask that question is has everything been accomplished that needed to be accomplished for us to bring it in, um, that they said that they would do. So that's why we asked for a yes and you gave us another one. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Shaw, can, can, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Same.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And motion passes.
And finally, resolution number twenty twenty-two, two thirty-five R. Authorization to renew software licensing agreement with Bentley Systems. Uh, this is for a mapping software service that we use for various, uh, engineering operations, GIS, uh, that kind of thing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can, can, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob- Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. And motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Corey.
Good evening. I have resolution twenty twenty-two, two forty-two dash R. Authorizing a change order number three for the Dublin Park HVAC renovation in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, when we put in the new HVAC for the pool area, we didn't realize that that would affect the obsolete fire detection systems. We have to put in a new panel and a couple of new sensors because they can't get the parts to the old one anymore.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. I think, I think Renee got the jump ball. Is there any, is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legal. You're up.
Good evening. Uh, the first matter that we have is a resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two three nine dash R. This is authorization of a change order for the Toyota build. Um, what we had here, you may remember that we had a mediation that was supposed to resolve, uh, some of these change order issues. Uh, unfortunately, Mary Beth didn't have all the firmed up numbers when it came to the sod and when it came to some of the, uh, the drainage issues. So what we had was another change order that came through for this amount of thirty-seven thousand seven sixty-one. But it's, uh, mostly comprised of re-sodding and, uh, redoing some of the, uh, the drainage. I've also been advised that a portion of this might have actually been kind of stepped up a bit because of, the sodding had to be postponed because of the football game. I think if there was some desire to do it earlier, but apparently by doing it later, apparently it increased some of the cost. So, uh, that's what we have as far as that change order.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roble- Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes.
This is President, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two four one R. Uh, this is authorization of an agreement with the Board of Madison, uh, Board of Education. Uh, rep- mayor referenced it earlier as far as an agreement with, uh, with the city's SROs and the crossing guards. Uh, this is basically approval of that agreement between the city and the Board of Education in order to proceed with that funding.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.